There we go. Good evening, everybody. And I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 15th, 2017 to order. At this time, for our moment of silence and just thinking about, I had an opportunity of representing that UN Conference on Food Safety, Water Safety, Infrastructure, and so forth. And as you meet people from around the world realizing how fortunate we are, not only in this country, but in this city, and how we're so blessed that the opportunities that we've been given and how with those blessings come great responsibility. So with that, let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Gordon, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we call the roll this evening, I just wanted to note, technically, our new Alderman for the Sixth Ward, Alderman Klul, has been sworn in, the official part of it, by our City Clerk, which is the procedure will have the, actually, the official ceremony coming up. He, as he mentioned before, has a daughter in Nepal, and he had said that he is visiting her, which has been set up a long time, so he's there. He'll be back, actually, right after the holiday, and will do the official swearing-in and he'll come to his first meeting. But since he is technically, he is now a council member, he will be listed on the roll as we move forward, so letting know some of those details. So with that, Jack, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Quell? I was gonna say he's cool, can't get his name right. Rossen?
Here.
McGinnis?
Tompkins?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you all a good evening. And as we begin this meeting of the City Council and our Committee of the Whole, I would like to welcome you all and those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're really happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. Tonight, if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We ask at that time that you identify yourself and your address. You're asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone, and I know you all will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, thank you all again for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a quick reminder that next week's meeting, our City Council meeting, will be on Tuesday evening in the chambers here so that everyone can have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, and I'll remind that one more time before we end the meeting. With that, we're going to move into some public hearings. And again, for the group, the public hearings are a section where we open them up for items that will, many of these will appear again on the agenda, but this is literally a legal process where we go through various items, and we have the committee chairs for those areas lead those public hearings. So with that, one, our first one is Alderman Gripp will lead a discussion on a public, the public hearing for community development.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for the resolution for case number CP-17-01, being the request of the City of Davenport, Community Planning and Economic Development, to adopt the Scott County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and add it as an element to Davenport Comprehensive Plan. And I understand that there is a presentation from ByState, and then we will open it up to any public with comment.
Thank you. Bring it up here a little bit. I am Brendan Melton. I'm a senior planner at ByState Regional Commission, and I wanted to give a brief overview of this plan update that we've gone through with Scott County. We were contracted with Scott County in August of 2016 to update the existing hazard mitigation plan for the county. It's a multi-jurisdictional plan, and so all of the cities are asked to participate or volunteer to participate in adopting the plan, and that's where we're at in that process. We've held a number of meetings, including a kickoff meeting, given presentations to several committees of the whole, which were open to the public, as well as address some resource agencies such as our Community Awareness of Roadways Safety Group and the Quad-City Emergency Planning Committee. We expect to hold an advisory committee meeting on November 27th, and we'll be distributing widely the information for that meeting as another public forum for the plan. We've submitted the draft plan to Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Division, and they are in the process of reviewing, preparing the document to submit to FEMA. The plan was initially adopted by FEMA in 2012. It has since expired, so ByState has escalated the need for updating the plan and have worked to update it in a quick manner. The plan was created to, and the plan exists because it, to meet the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requirement for several funding sources through FEMA. So that's why we do it. We asked the staff of Davenport Planning Department to update all of their priority hazards and to look at their mitigation actions that correspond with those priorities. And so we've received feedback from them, and you, really. The actual priorities haven't changed much, you know, maybe a slot here or there. In the previous plan, we addressed 40 hazards, and we've narrowed that down to the 15 natural hazards required by FEMA based on some funding availability for that. For Davenport, originally, 27 mitigation actions were identified, and the planning staff had decided to combine and reword a number of those actions. So I would ask that you take a look at Davenport's section of those mitigation actions and consider how that might impact your community. All the mitigation actions are listed in Chapter Four of the plan. As far as the plan and how it feeds into other community plans, it's up to each jurisdiction to really monitor the status of those mitigation actions. So it's, there's really no authority over that. FEMA can't say you have to have this done by a certain time. It's really up to the communities to drive that effort of preparing for potential disasters. This plan will continue to update annually, not necessarily annually. A full update occurs every five years. Annually, the plan is reviewed, and that's led by the Emergency Management Agency to review the plan to make sure that any changes that have happened in between those five-year updates is recorded in that plan. So as far as adoption timeline goes, Scott County did adopt the plan on September, excuse me, November 2nd, Bettendorf on November 7th, and then you will consider it, I believe, on November 21st meeting. The plan can be approved pending adoption, so even though not all of the small communities have adopted the plan, FEMA can adopt it without those approvals. But we're targeting to have all of the smaller, all of the other communities and the smaller communities adopt the plan before the end of February of 2018. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just a question, if that's all right. Just as a follow-up, maybe define hazards a little bit. People get confused with that term.
Sure. So hazards, in the case of this, in the context of this plan, FEMA has identified 15 naturally occurring hazards that, according to this law, need to be addressed in these mitigation plans. So those hazards include things that we would normally think about, like thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, dam failure, levee failure, those sorts of things, but also include, you know, winter storms, wind storms. So really, anything naturally occurring that could cause large-scale damage are hazards that are considered. As I'd mentioned, there were several more in the previous plan update. A lot of those were attributed to more man-made causes. That's not strictly required in this plan, and based on the funding availability through FEMA, it was decided that we should stick to the natural hazards, the required hazards that need to be addressed.
Thank you. We won't do questions now during the public hearing. If we have any questions when it comes back up within the community planning agenda, the council will have an opportunity to ask you questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. Our next is Public Works, Public Hearing, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that process.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open a public hearing to convey parcels R-0429-03, R-0429-03A, and parcel R-0429-02A to the property owners at 3115 Daisy Avenue. Anybody wishing to address this, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Our third and final public hearing this evening will be under Finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open this public hearing for amending of the North Urban Renewal Area Plan, and I'm going to ask staff to come up for a moment, please, just to share a little bit of details on this before we open it to the public.
Bruce Burger, Community Planning and Economic Development. So this public hearing is for amending the area plan for the North Urban area, renewal area, and the idea, each year, we do an internal TIF, which is when TIF funds from that area are used to cover a variety of administrative costs related to TIF administration throughout the year. So it's the same amount that we've done for a number of years, but because under the new state code, you're required to amend your plan to be able to define what you're using funds on each year, then each year, we have to formally amend the plan to be able to do that. So that's really all the public hearing's about, and there's an item later on in the agenda as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, I can move to close this public hearing?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and I, to close this public hearing, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you. I close this public hearing and pass it over to you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. There are no presentations for tonight's meeting. Are there any petitions or communication from any of my colleagues on the council? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple, talking about schools and education, so Davenport Central just went through a National Honor Society process where students can apply, and it's only open to juniors and seniors, as most people know, but well over 100 juniors and seniors are now members of the National Honor Society at Davenport Central, so that's quite a news story. So combine that, or add that with North High School having a dual enrollment program where you can get your associate's degree before you actually get your high school diploma, and then West having a national championship robotics team. If you're not paying attention to education and what Davenport can do for students and children, you're just not paying attention. And for anybody out there that's thinking of moving, or any realtors, you need to pay attention to this because our schools are leading the way, especially with the amount of National Honor Society members now in our district. And then one other thing, a great thank you to the Police Department, the Disabled American Veterans, Vietnam Veterans, 299-776, American Legion Post 26, Rock Island Arsenal, Veterans Foreign Wars, many scouts, and most especially to Tiffany, our wonderful secretary, for the, even though it was freezing cold and on Friday, there was tons of people out there, and everybody was walking, and it was like there was no cold at all. So thank you for, again, making Davenport lead the way in one of the best Veterans Day parades that could be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just want to, again, reiterate, there will be, the meeting next week will be the 21st, which is a Tuesday. Then also to note that the, when there's months where there are five Wednesdays, we do not have the fifth Wednesday, is that, we do not have a meeting that week. So Tuesday's meeting will be the last one until December, when it'll be December 6th will be our next council meeting, which will be also a meeting at, I mean, will be the meeting at that time. So just wanted to keep you apprised of that. And again, I want to thank Alderman Gordon and all my colleagues while I was gone last week. Thank you for running the meeting. It was a very productive session, and we'll discuss more about that as time goes on. So we're going to move into action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed tonight is community development. Before Alderman Gripp begins, again, just to remind everybody, this is where we go through every item on the agenda. Community has an opportunity to discuss those with us, and we'll, we obviously are responsive to whatever anybody brings up, and then based on that, those that are approved will move forward for approval at the next meeting. We don't go through the whole list one at a time again after we've discussed them here. So this is an opportunity for people to discuss and give input. So with that, I'll turn over community development to Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the meeting for community development this evening. We have seven items to consider. Item number one is a third consideration, ordinance for case number SNC-17-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to change the name of a segment of Forest Grove Drive east of Utica Ridge Road to Forest Grove Court. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a third consideration for case number SNC-17-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to change the name of a former segment of Veterans Memorial Parkway located west of Utica Ridge Road, abutting Walsh Point, third addition to East 67th Court. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-17-09, request of Michael R. Leap Sr. for the proposed rezoning of 13.465 acres, more or less, of property located at the southeast corner of Eastern Avenue and East 53rd Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a second consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-17-10, request of Women in Spiritual Hope Ministries, Inc. to rezone 7,847 square feet, more or less, of property located at 5210 North Division Street, from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District to R5 Medium Density Dwelling District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name and your address, please.
Lynn Johnson. I'm the executive director and co-founder of Wish Ministries, and I live at 417 East 12th Street. I just wanted to update you and part of the, part of the questions at hand last week about the inspection, and we are going to have an inspection done either Thursday or Friday of this week, so we'll have the results to you real soon. I also wanted to say that there is only one person negative in the community, a neighbor of us, that is negative, and she's come to me on several occasions and said what a great program it is. She just doesn't want it in her backyard. And we all feel that way at some point. We don't want something in our backyard. But recently, another person on the, read a book for a lady doing the exact same thing as Ms. Brenda and the Love Ladies in Alabama on the East Coast. So this is a program that works. We've not done it before, but it's a program that works, and we are dedicated to this program, and we just would like to have your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-17-05 of Stephen and Meredith Hirsch for the rezoning of .65 acre, more or less, of real property located at 5135 Marquette Street, south of West 53rd Street and east of Marquette Street, from R1 Low Density Dwelling District to R3 PUD Planned Unit Development to facilitate development of four residential units. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and your address, please.
Ronald Voorhees, 1135 West 53rd Street. I live within 200 feet of that property there, and about a year ago, you guys approved a dwelling on a corner lot, I believe that was going to be an eight-plex. Now you're going to do a four-plex. I personally own more property than both of them properties put together, and I don't know if your council is aware of this, but within probably two years or less, there's going to be two properties within 200 feet of that property that's going to come up for sale. What do you think their value is going to be worth when you got a 12-plex sitting within 200 feet of you? That makes me think now that I should be the next one jump aboard here, and since I own more property in both of them, I should be able to tear my house down and put me up a 12-plex, and then relocate, and take the money and run. I really want you guys to consider that because the two elderly ladies that's within 200 feet, one of them's 94 years old, in very, very bad health conditions, the other one is like, she's real close to 90, in and out of the hospital daily. Now, you, no, no, where's her property going to go to? And here, you want to put a 12-plex in? No, no, if this goes through, I'm going to be the next one jumping on board. I'll tear my house down, relocate, and I'll put up a 12-plex. Now you got roughly 24 houses within, what, 600 square feet? I'll say, roughly. Stop and think about that, council. You, to know what you do for one, you got to do for all of us, and that's where we stand at now. Because the two elderly people, the only way they can make it down here is if the medics brought them in. That's how ill they are. That's why I say, within probably about a year, them two properties will be up for sale. And then, you got, those duplexes there, plus these two properties up for sale, where's our neighborhood going? Plus, you're not even thinking about the nursing home across the street. Them elderly people get out and walk them sidewalks. Is it going to be safe? Our crime has already went up. Has this council got time to have a police officer sit at that corner all the time? Because now we wait over an hour for a squad car. Think about it before you guys make your decision, please. Thank you.
Step to the lectern, state your name and your address, please.
I'm Dub Lopshire, 1502 North Pioneer Street, and I have a petition that we have gone out and gotten a lot of people that are totally against doing this. My mom is probably one of the elderly that he's talking about, and it's a big concern for us whether or not we have so much turnover down there. And I just really, as he said, urge you to think about it because it's not, it's always been just a perfect little area. Okay. Sorry.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this item? We'll go to council. Alderwoman Dickman?
Just wondering if staff could pull some of the police call data from that area for us? Thank you.
Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've talked to folks, talked to neighbors. I agree, we have duplexes in the area, and there isn't anybody I've talked to that wants this to continue, and they're concerned about, just like the gentleman said, we're going to have this, then the next one duplex, then the next duplex. We have duplexes in the area that are a concern. Nobody I've talked to wants this, so I'm asking, as we tabled it before, nothing's changed. So I ask that we don't support this. Thank you.
Alderman Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if developers here or staff can address this, but in looking through the green sheet on this one, the renderings looked, I mean, they're pretty nice. So I know we're calling them duplexes. Do we know what kind of the market rate or the targeted market is for these four properties? I assume they're owner-occupied. Couldn't staff confirm that? Or if there's, I don't know if someone that is associated with this development is here?
Bruce Burger with Community Planning and Economic Development. I'm not certain either. I'm not sure that they provided any of that information for us either. From a federal funding standpoint, I, we haven't seen any indication that they were applying for affordable subsidies on anything, so my guess would be it's more than reasonable.
Well, then, so my questions would be that I'd like to know before next week, are these owner-occupied? They would appear to be, but I want to confirm that. What the intended price point is, if they are indeed going to go on the market. And there's one more. Well, those are the two that, right now, that are top of mind for me, but if that's the case, you know, it would look like a price point of like 220 to 280, maybe, thousand, and, you know, that, that's quite a nice development, so. But I just want to confirm those things before making the decision, but it would appear that it potentially has a, I think would have a positive impact on the neighborhood, not necessarily a negative one, if it's, again, owner-occupied and at that price point. But, so I appreciate staff getting that information for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Mattson?
Thanks for letting me talk again. Just remember, everyone, we were rushed last year to put things in this corner, and we were told it has to go up, and it's beautiful, and it's wonderful, and on, and on, and on, and there's steel grass there. There's a lot of concern from the neighbors about what's being done around this area and what's going on, and the folks are concerned, I understand your point, and you're valid, but understand what they're thinking. Thank you.
And I'll kind of reiterate what Alderman Gordon says. As far as infill goes, if these are owner-occupied, and they are what the renderings that we've received are, you're looking at 220 to 280. These aren't rental properties. These are going to be folks who buy the house, they live there, they take care of it. When you start talking about infill within a city, if you're talking 12 units at $220,000 apiece, over a million dollars of assessed value, just looking at this, over a million dollars of assessed value with zero dollars put into infrastructure, you're putting it on a road that already has the infrastructure.
on a road that already has the infrastructure. This is potentially good infill, confirming that these are owner-occupied and what the price point is. These aren't, that's what they are. So potentially, I would think if we really want to do infill, and when we do infill, you will always find a reason to say no. There will always be a percentage of folks who are against change, but this seems to me to be a good infill opportunity. So we will await those answers from staff before next week. And we will move on to item number six, which is a resolution for case number CP 17-01 being the request of the City of Davenport, Community Planning and Economic Development to adopt the Scott County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and add it as an element of Davenport Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? And now would be a time to ask questions from your presentation earlier. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, has FEMA given us any money?
Yes.
How much?
In regards to actually completing the plan or to...
Whatever money they're giving us, please tell us.
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to what projects have been funded through FEMA recently for Davenport. But yes, FEMA has given to update this plan, Scott County received about $30,000 to update this plan.
And so Davenport's getting some?
Are they getting some of that money?
Right.
The benefit of having the plan in place and being eligible for, applying for federal FEMA funding.
So they're not giving us any money to do the plan?
They're not giving you any money to do the plan, that's correct.
Alderwoman Rossen.
Yes, thank you. Question, it actually stuck. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Question for you, since this is the Risk Mitigation Plan, I was just wondering, is there any impact on local insurances for businesses, the average individual? Is this something that insurance adjusters will be looking at and determining rates for the area?
No rate determinations are based on this plan. We do include information about the National Flood Insurance Program, which feeds into insurance rates related to flooding.
But it supports a better insurance rate? That's what I want to know.
Does it support a better insurance rate?
A more favorable rate in the area?
I don't know that it really necessarily affects the rate itself. That has more to do with that National Flood Insurance Program and the designation that the city has, and I'm kind of blanking on what that is, but you do get a benefit from having that in place.
Wayne Woolley with the Community Planning and Economic Development. Part of the benefits of this Hazard Mitigation Plan is that it is a prerequisite to join the Community Rating System, which is a program of the National Flood Insurance Program. The city is part of that program, and as such, the activities that we do afford the flood insurance, the people that own have flood insurance within the city, at most a 10% break at this point in time on their premiums that they have to pay. So this plan being a prerequisite, yes, it does have an impact on insurance rates. And to answer Alderman Mattson's question, yes, over the past probably five years, the city has received federal funding for some of the buyouts that have occurred, at least from 2008, in the 32nd and Fair Avenue area, as well as the 32nd and Harrison area. And that was to the tune of, from FEMA, that was about, I want to say 350,000. And then associated with that was block grant funding through the tune of about $1,200,000.
Alderwoman Dickman.
You mentioned in your presentation that you kind of came up with more of a concise list of hazards to prepare for. Was that to be able to better prepare for those particular hazards?
Might have to call Wayne back up here again because it was your staff that actually gave the input on updating the plan. So I was provided with some rationale but wasn't involved in that process, so Wayne can explain.
Yeah, I was curious also if, you know, how confident we are in this plan. Is it just, you know, to make sure we're preventing loss of life, or is this to get us all the way back up to how it was?
You'll never get back up to the way it was, unfortunately. It is to better prepare. A number of the action items in here are for training and exercise to keep those programs going. For instance, the hazmat team and the hazmat program for chemical spills, et cetera, for their continued training and support of that program. Exercising through the city's debris management plan is another type of item, just for an example. So that when we get heavy windstorms, we coordinate with Iowa American, I mean Mid-American to prioritize which streets get cleared of trees and such that they can get their crews in. So there's a number of those types of actions. So it's to better prepare for those types of activities, as well as kind of mitigation. In other words, flood buyouts would be one of those things, so that we can remove those people and properties and buildings from the floodplain so that they aren't damaged, and we can get people safely out of the way of floods.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, the city of Davenport is a national leader in dealing with hazards, both man-made and natural. And our mitigation is, you know, probably the best in the country as you look at the number-one riverfront on the Mississippi River and what's happened on Duck Creek over the last 20 years. So I personally, yeah, I'm incredibly proud of our staff and what they've done over the years. You know, we've worked with FEMA, and that's part of the reason why we've been so successful. So if you want to know how it's done right, look at Team Davenport.
Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's been clarified, but I just wanted to make sure that, and just to answer your question, Alderman Mattson, is this not on? Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Is that better? Okay. All right. The light was on, but okay. So just to clarify, I also sat through the presentation earlier, so thank you for your time. This is something that is required in order for us to get any kind of payment from FEMA, and so therefore, you have to have it. So it's being proactive, doing the work in advance. So thank you, staff, for doing that. And that way, should hopefully we never need it, but should we do need it, then this does provide us the opportunity to receive funding from FEMA. So it's a prerequisite, we have to have it, and it's to be updated every five years. So thank you.
Seeing no one else, that item will move on, and we will go to item number seven, which is a motion approving the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation for the programming of the unspent and unobligated community development block grant funds for CDBG year 42, ending June 30th, 2017. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Does staff want to discuss this, or no? We will go to any council with comments? Seeing none, this item will move on. And with that, I would entertain a motion to place items four and five on the discussion agenda and place the remaining items on the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes the community development portion of the meeting, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The second area to be discussed is public safety. Alden Mattson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the discussion items for public safety. Number one is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 titled "No Parking" by adding Wilkes Avenue along the east side from 16th Street South to the alley. Is there anyone from the public that is concerned? Counsel? Very good. Number two is a third consideration, ordinance amending Schedule 14 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Intersection Traffic Signals" by adding Elmore Avenue at Veterans Memorial Parkway. Anybody from the public concerned? Counsel? Number three is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.40 entitled "Projectiles and Toy Pistols" by renaming the chapter "Projectiles, Toy Pistols, and Fireworks" and adding a new section, 9.40.030, to allow for the legal use of consumer-grade fireworks on specified dates and times. Anyone from the public concerned? Counsel? Very good. Item four is immersion approving beer and liquor license applications. We only have some annual license renewals this meeting, so they're on your agenda. We don't read all the annual ones. Does anybody have any concern from the public concerning any annual license renewals? Counsel? Very good. I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to please recommend an agenda.
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
Very good. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Dickman. Our next item is, our third area, is Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set that agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the discussion with the first item being a resolution to convey parcels R0429-03, R049429-03A, and R029-02A to the property owners at 3115 Daisy. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Do we have someone from staff that can address this?
Bruce Burger, Community Planning and Economic Development. Want a little update, or kind of a new late-breaking news, I guess. One of the parcels, we need to do a little bit more research with, and we need to talk with the property owner, too. But in talking with corporation counsel, our suggestion might be to table so that we can address, I think one of the questions Alderman Dunn had brought up was down the line if perhaps the city wanted to acquire the properties back. You know, what would that cost be? And so there are just several things that we'd like to kind of talk through yet and be able to maybe still work out on, something that'll allow the property owner to use the property and us to satisfy any concerns.
Mr. Chair, we're just going to take a look at whether we can achieve the same purposes without conveying the properties. Make the neighbors happy and still get to the same spot. Why don't you just table it until staff brings it back?
Go ahead, Alderman Dunn.
So, yeah. So I recommend we table this until staff brings it back?
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Alderman Dunn. Number two is a resolution approving the contract for the Anita and River Drive Sewer Improvement Project from Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number three is a resolution accepting the FY 2017 Street Resurfacing, Micro-Surfacing, Slurry Seal, Cape Seal Project. Anybody from the public? Number four is a resolution approving payment to Scott County for this city portion of FY, the Y48 Resurfacing Project in the amount of $274,972.95. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number five is a resolution approving the contract for engineering services with Savage Services Incorporated of Midville, Utah, in the amount of $107,500 to perform design services for the Transload Rail Spur Expansion Project. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the Signal System Improvement Projects along Locust Street, 53rd Street, and Kimberley Road to CDB Utility Contractors Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $1,267,976. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number seven is a resolution of accepting the Jungy Park ADA Improvement Project. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Yeah, the project looks great. Good job, Scott. I'm going to read the next three and then ask for input. Number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. And number 10 is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracks of real estate. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 11 is a preliminary resolution for the 2017 Alley Resurfacing Program. Two petitions received the resurfacing of the alleys between Leclerc and Farnham from Garfield to Columbia and between Schricker and Glassbill from Pine to Belmont. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 12 is a motion determining property values for the FY 2017 Alley Resurfacing Program. Two petitions received to resurface the alleys between Leclerc and Farnham from Garfield to Columbia and between Schricker and Glassbill from Pine to Belmont. Anybody from the public? Counsel? 13 is a motion approving the, approving the submittal of FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant at pre-application for the federal fiscal year 2019. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 14 is a motion accepting the full-depth concrete patching project on West 53rd Street, just west of Pine Street. Anybody from the public? Counsel? And 15 is a motion accepting the Duck Creek Bike Pass Spur Resurfacing Project budgeted through the CIP. Anybody from the public? Counsel? The last item is number 16, a motion to approve change order number four associated with the 2017 Resurfacing Contract with Hawkeye Pavement Corporation, the amount of $52,864.23. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Dunn, will you please set the agenda?
Yes, with item number one being tabled, I'd entertain a motion to put the remaining items on consent, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead that discussion, please?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. I opened finance. We have two items to discuss. Item number one is a resolution... Can you guys hear me? Okay, how about that? Better? Okay. Try this again. Number one is a resolution approving an internal advance to the TIF Increment Fund for Administrative Costs. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from counsel? This item will move on. Number two is a motion approving submission of the City of Davenport's Annual Urban Renewal Report. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Now that you can all hear me. Anyone from counsel? This item moves on. I make a motion to move both items to the consent agenda. Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We also have a list of purchases that is just for informational purposes only, and I close finance and pass it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Tompkins. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none? Any public with business? Again, this is one where we would listen to your input and...
I'm McWilliams, fifth ward. I just wanted to let all of you guys know that the KSI Thanksgiving Dinner is next week on Tuesday from 11:00 to 1:00. So I just wanted to let you guys know. And snowshoring practice for me starts this Friday, so just want to let you guys know.
Anyone else? Are there any other reports, city officials? Seeing none? Been moved and seconded. All in favor, adjourn. Say aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Adjourn.
Are you all jet lagged, buddy? What time is it internally for you?
It is, what is this? I don't know, it's seven hours from now, so it's, so it's like 3 o'clock in the morning or...
It's awful.
Yeah, I know. I don't know, I don't know what day I am, but...